Ready? At TV.
Oh, no. Do we have a remote?
What?
I think it usually does it manually.
All right.
One of those the pellet boxes?
Yeah.
Why do they keep them here? You said keeping.
I'm going to choke on a Skittle.
You're right?
Yeah. They keep them in the locker room in the back. And then they get them out. Just in preparation. They'll stop using them when they do early voting.
The shit shows coming up to happen.
You're gone? Okay, with the hour being after?
This is what happened, I won't.
Yeah, sure.
Seven. We'll open the meeting for the public. All being present. First item, minutes, September nineteenth. Everybody read them. Any objections, any issues, any corrections?
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to fill, who I go second?
Second.
One more seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Oh, you've got five minutes.
Was it both Kyle really? Is he coming? I just texted him that the, um...
Okay. Well, you can't do any of that kind of... It's the A and I, but...
But he had, if you read your packet, there's some questions. I don't know if he's coming down or not.
Okay.
So I don't know. No, because no questions for Kyle. One minute each then. It's good nutrition.
Get Skittles in there?
Yep.
Hi, thanks.
Yes, I would choke on it.
Thank you.
I should have brought my soup and salt to go with it.
That would have been great.
Billy might be all soaked up.
Hey, Sally.
Maybe we should start scheduling at seven oh five.
He's going to be dislike the old days. Well, screw the pay. Well, why are we getting so close to getting along enough time? He ain't, he ain't, he's never happy.
Maybe bring cods or something, I mean...
No, they're happy. Because we're too efficient on one thing?
Eat a piece of candy. It'll make you feel better.
You don't want to parade the push.
Um, I think we should date till we get here. Hi, Kyle. Jeff, we can do fifty-four Peach Street?
All right. We'll get the other one, fifty-four Peach. We have a letter from Kyle telling us what it's worth.
Do you have that letter, Jeff?
Hmm?
Do you have that letter?
Yeah. That's what it's worth, Kyle?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's an updated... We did that letter once before with the all contract prices. That's with new contract prices, current police, et cetera.
Can I ask what I think is a really stupid question? But I'm going to ask it anyways. So it seems so cheap. Like I couldn't do my driveway for that price. How, if you look at the different breakdowns, like we'll use police because that's the easiest one to use. If you do the math, that comes out to like six minutes' worth of a detail. How does that... I don't understand. I guess, Kyle, that's what it is. Can you explain it because I don't understand?
We looked at, basically said that's a day's... That they would pave that road in a day. All right? So we basically took the footage divided by the day price for the police to come up with that. Yes, it's cheap. So, but if we were paving that thing, that would probably be a day's work. It might be a little bit under on that. But even if I doubled it, I don't think I included the police cost for the milling. But even if I threw that in there, it'd be only a little bit more, so...
But what do you... When you say a day, do you mean the whole road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're saying this is just twice for what that portion of the road?
Correct.
So paraded over the length of Peach Street?
Correct, correct.
It's already twenty-five feet long.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Uh, Kyle? Is this already under contract ready to go?
Um, the paving contract is in place and we will use it. The water contract has proceeded and it's done. The water contract will not do it, but the paving contract is in place. The funding is there.
To do this street?
Yes.
And when will it be done?
Uh, next time, next, next year's paving. I can't give you a specific month or, or whatever, but when, it'll be next year's paving.
After July?
I don't know. It could be done before July.
Well, you say next year. The municipal government always says, well, the next year, usually July first.
Yeah, for us, it's a construction season because the pipe was put in this year. So we want to get a free star, get a winter out of it. And I never really know what order we're going to do in streets until we start putting things together and getting next years on board. But we intend to use the same paving contract we have this year. The road will be, it will be funded out of the water project. But as you keep in mind, Mr. Chairman and to the board, that we'll probably do something similar like this. Right next door is the Litchfield's Way, which is New World Estates. They have the same requirement, except they have a big area to pave out there. And we'll probably ask for some kind of a, you know, to satisfy that requirement, do something and involve a larger donation for that. And then do the whole road all at once. So it'll subsidize our costs a little bit when we do it. And then we'll end up hopefully with a road that's paved from one end to the other without any other patches in it.
All right, well, it's not necessarily a donation. They're getting something for it. They're not just writing a check. Here you go.
Correct.
Plus they're getting it on the chief to get it, everything else, but... Anybody have any... Paul, do you have any questions, comments?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Phil?
Nope.
John? I'd like to run it just up to a grand, just so that, you know, he's getting a benefit from the town.
Um, that's your prerogative.
Yeah, I mean, he is getting a benefit. I mean, instead of the down and dirty, so... Anybody have an issue or you just want to leave it nine hundred?
I'd leave it at nine hundred.
Okay, you want to make that as a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the, um... This, you know, the, um, bond, the bond release at nine hundred dollars.
Well, it's not bond release, it's the, we can't release the bond until everything's all checked out.
I understand.
Right?
Yeah, I would suggest that you make a motion to, um, release the, um, security for fifty-four Peach Street upon the receipt of a, um, gift in the amount of nine hundred dollars to be utilized for paving in Peach Street.
Do we use the word gift too lightly there?
No, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a gift because...
In our terms, it's, pardon me, but in our terms, that's essentially what it comes in as. It'll, essentially will get deposited as such, for a purpose.
Donation?
No, it's, it's... Doesn't pay off, but would it be...
Payment in lieu of work in the public way.
Yes, I like that. Yes, I'm okay with that.
I make that motion.
Okay, and it's going, but I, what, the subdivision is not done after this?
It is.
We haven't done, we've got to do the final bond release. Has he submitted everything?
Yeah, everything's done but this. Form H's, ass builds, everything's done.
But that was the motion to release the security.
With the motion to accept this, then we'll do the next part, we'll do the whole thing at once. We're just agreeing to it. We can't release now, we don't even have the money.
Or you could release it subject to receiving the money.
Well, we got to have a, we got to have a residence. Yeah, a residence here, yeah.
That too, yeah.
It's not an accepted way.
No, we haven't accepted that yet, not Peach Street. The subdivision has to be, that hasn't been accepted yet.
It's not going to be, that's a private way.
Yeah, but what we always do, Kyle, is at, before we accept the road and release the bond in its entirety, we do a residence hearing.
Well, accepting as in, um, it, it will not be in a, this is not Litchfield's Way. It's a little driveway next to it, it's actually unnamed.
But whatever he's bonded, we have to have the residence hearing for that. That's what we do.
Okay.
Been done before you, before you left the first time.
Yeah, there's two residents, but if that's your procedure, then...
Yeah, this, we can't release it right now. This is, we don't even have the money, so...
Yeah, I didn't realize that you'd have the residence hearing if it wasn't going to be a quote unquote accepted public way.
This, so we go from there, then the next step is for them to schedule for bond release and residence hearing. So Phil made the motion, all in favor, Phil?
I need a second.
I'll second.
You'll second, Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. But this is only accepted, so we got that. So the next part is, he can have his request for his final bond release and everything else. We do the residence hearing without time.
So they'll have this call and schedule for a, a, um, residence hearing. I think this is the third time they've... This is a final bond release request.
Okay, but it's not even really a bond release. He's going to give us the bucks, we don't have the dollars. It's a little bit different, so... All right? Whatever he wants to do that. So, we're all set there? Next one, the hour being after seven ten, we have a continued public hearing for West End. Do you have anything to make, Dave? Keep speaking. For our West End. No one wants to, I can move on to the next, I'll go on.
We had, um, I'll let Steve address the change in the drainage with the buffer. We had asked last time we were here for a waiver, which couldn't be accommodated, but we changed the, um, location of the drainage, which Steve Cabral from Crossman Engineering will, um, address. And the only outstanding item that we had other than that was, um, the buyer department. And they recently sent, oh, I don't know how recent it was, but Deputy Chief Holber sent a, um, a letter to the county board. I don't know if Chief of Chairman, that was...
Yeah, I got a bunch of stuff from all the different ones, so I...
Yeah, that, that was, um, that's new since the last time we were here. That was outstanding last time, but that's been taken care of. And Steve can address the change in the drainage.
Yeah, I'm Steve Cabral with Crossman Engineering. And I tend to use a Nezo, but I'm plugged into the computer if we can get that TV to work. Which of you all prefer?
Do you know how to?
Mr. Frank, you stood off?
Oh.
Mm-hmm. Want to see it?
Okay, again, I'm Steve Cabral with Crossman. And these, the image on the screen is the updated landscape plan. And the, the key item that we addressed is that we removed every structure, piece of concrete, drainage structure, you name it, within the twenty-six foot buffer. So the only items that will be placed in the buffer will be two rows of evergreens that fully conform to the town's own ordinance. And the ordinance also recommended or required a fence. So right along the property line, we have a six-foot stockade fence for screening. And then we'll have two parallel rows of plantings. And those plantings will be seven feet apart, all in accordance with the, the ordinance. Now, before we proposed this buffer, we did take a close look at what's out there today. So I'll just show you a few pictures. Okay, this is on the, the west side of the project. And you can see that there's a storage area that's fenced in. And what I want to point out is that fence in the rear is actually the property line. So in many areas, there's really only scrub brush, very small, young trees, or areas where there's no vegetation whatsoever. Because of this condition, that's why we decided to install the fence and put two rows of vegetation. Now, this is a view looking towards West Street, again, on the west side of the property. This fence is that fenced-in area that I just showed. And you can see as you go from the fence towards west, there's really not a substantial amount of vegetation. And this is a closer look on the west street side of that fence. You can see that there is some old existing utility structures. So that further demonstrates that the existing buffer had been disturbed in the past. So all of this will be removed and we'll, as I said, we'll have two rows of evergreens. This is also on the west side from that fenced area that I showed on the first screen. This is looking south. And again, you can see that, that most of the buffer area is already disturbed. In the past, there used to be a shed building there. And the taller trees don't exist until you get closer to the property line. Okay, this is a view down at the back of the property, well, the south of the property. And that road in the distance is actually Clear Pond Drive. Now, if I were to superimpose the twenty-six foot buffer, the buff actually extends into this paved area. So the paved area in a grass strip is the buffer that's there today. All of this is going to be, all the paper will be removed. And again, there'll be two rows of vegetation and a stockade fence. This is at the very back corner of the property, at the southwest corner, which would be behind where that truck is in this area. Now, when you look at an aerial photograph, this section of the buffer looks to be thickly vegetated. But that, what you see on the aerial view is really just a tree canopy. If you look down at what's on the surface, it's really just scrub brush. And we measured where are those more mature trees? And we found out, in this case, those trees are actually on the butter's property. So again, based on our observations, we felt that it's really best, not to save what's there because it has little value, but it's best to fully follow the guidelines that the town poses, which is stockade fence at the back, then we'll have two rows of evergreens. And the plantings, again, will conform to what you'll, what you'll require. When it comes to the drainage, the way we've accommodated the drainage is essentially identical to what we originally proposed. Originally, we had a combination of subsurface infiltration systems on the lower parking level as well as in the buffer. We've eliminated the drainage, underground drainage system that was going to be planted between the trees. And we've just enlarged the lower-level infiltration system. And by doing so... I just want to point out a few benefits of this drainage system. Now, under current conditions, whoops. You know, if we just quickly look at the aerial photograph, left is existing, right is proposed. Currently, you have essentially one acre of impervious surfaces, parking rooftop that just drains directly into the town drainage system. There's no mitigation for water quality whatsoever. With the proposed development, even though it looks substantial, we're really only increasing the amount of impervious by about half an acre. So overall, there's not a substantial increase in impervious surfaces. But with recommendations from the town engineer, we've oversized the system so that we don't just mitigate the increase in impervious surfaces, we essentially mitigate the entire property. For example, during any rainstorm, from a one-inch storm to the theoretical twenty-five-year storm event, any water or rain that lands on the rooftop or the parking is going to be fully contained within that underground infiltration system. So you'll only have any one or from the impervious surfaces during events larger than the twenty-five-year storm. So just to give you a few numbers, if you look at the entire site, including the buffers, during a one-year storm, you have a hundred percent decrease in flow. For the two-year event, you have a ninety-eight point nine percent decrease. The theoretical one-year, I mean, ten-year storm, we have an eighty-eight point five percent decrease. And for the hundred-year storm, we still have a forty-five point eight percent decrease in peak flow. But if we were to look at the volume, even during that one-hundred-year storm event, we have a seventy percent decrease in total volume that exits the site into the town drainage system. In addition to those peak flow and volume mitigation numbers, we're fully conforming to the DEP and the town storm order standards. For example, typically, you'd want to design a system so that fully treats the one-inch rainfall. This project does that because that one-inch rainfall is fully captured and fully infiltrated. So from an environmental perspective, there's a substantial benefit. So since we were here last, those are really the primary changes. We've removed the drainage system from the buffer. And we propose a buffer that fully meets the zoning ordinance. Now, we did receive a letter from Carl, the town engineer, today. And he would be with me. I know that his, um, comments, and I can quickly go through them. Uh, and this would be at the top of page two, where the comments begin. And basically, Carl mentioned, or reiterates what we stayed on the plan. At this stage, the building itself is not fully designed. So the, because the building is not fully designed, the internal piping of the roof drain is not fully designed. But we do have notations on the plan that instruct the designer or the architect we are to connect the roof drains into that underground drainage system. So number one, and the first comment, which is actually identified as number three, just reiterates that fact, that the roof drain has to be designed prior to the building permit stage. Uh, the next item, in our underground drainage system, which I'll quickly go back to, we actually have six individual underground fields. Now, the reason we have six individual fields is that because of the rectangular shape, they're different size, different lengths, or different widths. So in our drainage model, they're identified as different fields. Uh, Carl recommends that we identify the roof drains to connect into fields B, C, and D. On our note five, we identified fields A, E, and F to be the points of connection. But we do agree with Carl that the roof drains can easily be diverted to B, C, and D. The reason we say that is because, in essence, they all operate as one large field. What I do like about Carl's suggestion is that we originally had the low flows going to fields A, E, and F. And Carl's recommendation have the roof drains go to B, C, and D. It just increases the infiltration footprint for those smaller storm events. So in essence, it'll operate the same, but it will begin infiltrating a little bit sooner. Okay. The next item had to do with the traffic study, just pretty much concurring with the peer review consultant, the plan review, item fifteen. Uh, Carl recommends that one of the sewer manholes be converted to a drop manhole to minimize the slope of one of the sewer pipes. And we agree with that. The sewer manhole is already on the plan, it's just a matter of identifying it as a drop manhole and adjusting the inherent. And then there are a few other comments in regards to lighting at the entrance on spring. And endorse, making sure that we have an additional sheet for the endorsement with all the fit conditions. So in essence, we fully agree with the comments from Carl. And we consider them to be good comments, but nothing that would really change the plans. I would like to answer any of your questions. I mean, we've been coming back and forth for six months, I don't want to go over too many things.
Well, I hear you're accepting all of Carl's...
Yes.
...recommendations in his memo from October seventeenth?
Yes.
From October sixteenth, so...
Good job, Kyle.
Thank you to Mr. K. Braw for doing my job.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, you were supposed to eat it.
It was fun that he did change up. Um, what do you, Kyle, any issues?
Uh, no, I just point out that, uh, under the traffic impact study, I note that, um, there had been discussions about putting an RRFB, that's a Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon. So it's a, it's a device similar to the one in ninety-five West Street at the crosswalk where, where it goes across West Street. Um, that had been discussed at the last meeting, and in this note here, I'm recommending that the project install that.
Okay. All right, so everything else is copasthetic?
Yes, the other items at the end are recommendations for conditions of approval, essentially.
Okay, we got water health data... Okay, we got Water Health dated the 8th. And these plans are sent back out, mostly for the drains. Water Health not be meeting until half the comments are due. They go to unanimously that they reiterate their comments from March 19th, '24, which stated they recommend both trash and recycling containers be provided in accordance with mask EEP waste ban. They also noted the applicant should be mindful of public safety in a highly populated area and work with the engineering department as well as the police department to ensure all required safety measures, crosswalk, street lighting, and any recommended precautionary measures that can assist in providing a safe environment for those driving, biking, and walking. So that was Water Health. Got one from, uh, there's Sewer Water. We received a Jitten Hotel and 130 West. And the memo states they need, we need departments by the 15th, they're not meeting until October 28th, so they have no comments. Right apartment, Alan Hoover. No, that's wrong. He said the applicant addressed all his previous comments. Yeah, from the building commissioner, Jim Crowley, and this has to do with the heights of the building. Uh, this is dated under Jim. I don't know if your people seen this yet or not, but.
I think it was at the last meeting.
This memo is intended to clarify the maximum height of a building allowed in the CBD zoning district as outlined in the zoning bylaws. I reviewed the plans I was presented, determined the project building height applies with the 52-foot maximum height requiring to provide in the local zoning bylaws. The building height is the average grade around the building to the top of the flat roof deck or midpoint of a slope roof as defined in the zoning bylaws. At each building elevation, the grade at each end of the building was taken and measured to the roof deck. The difference between the two numbers was divided in half and added to the lower roof height. Each elevation has different average heights. In every case, the height, the height is below a 52-foot maximum as required by the zoning bylaws, and we gave a sketch to that effect. And we had Kyle's. That's all we have from any other board of comments. Have a question for you guys, haven't seen it presented, but we do have that bylaw, section 5J. Will you be presenting that, or how we, when's that coming to us?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Section 5J, no wonder it was approved in May at our meeting. But one, and every seven, one for every seven units, this falls under that.
Inclusionary zoning.
You need to present stuff, it's in the book what it says.
This is the inclusionary zoning?
Yep.
So, we, um, have the A&R plan that we filed, um, January 25th. So that's, um, froze zoning, so. Yeah, I know, so I don't know.
All right, why don't I update? It's in, right now, it's in the court, so it's out there, but that hasn't been decided.
Right.
So, based upon that, is, you would have to submit a 5J. You want this to move forward? Or if you're gonna wait for the courts, you're gonna have to put it on hold until such time the decision's rendered.
Um, so, I don't know if I can touch on the court thing or not, um.
Well, Nadine, when it comes back, it's either up or down.
Yeah.
Until such time, if you wanna go forward, you have to do the whole 5J routine.
If the zoning's not frozen.
Or if you wanna get it approved tonight, well, not tonight, you'd have to submit it. So if you want it, you're in a hurry, you're not gonna wait for the court, you can do that. But right now, you're under 5J. If you wanna wait for the court to decide and come back, and you wanna leave this, you'd have to put, give us an extension through until such time you think it might be back.
Okay, so, the court did rule on it. That's where I'm getting confused, because.
Yeah, but we have nothing, there's no official. And plus, you're still, e- even if the court does rule on it, you'd have to do another A&R, which, which would be probably one of it, so until such time, it's not official.
Well, they made, it, there's a court order that has been.
We don't have an A&R plan that's gonna correct it.
There is an A&R plan, there's the one that we submitted back, um, I can't remember, sometime in January, February, so there.
I understand, but we also have, um, come back to awesome, it's, it's up to the boards determination whether they're gonna appeal whatever's there, but my point is, we have nothing now.
Yeah, I.
Until we get something, boom. We can't, this is kinda limbo, so. If you're gonna go, if you wanna get out of here tonight, well, tonight, you just have to submit the 5J. If you wanna sit and wait until such time you think it's gonna happen, and if it comes back in your favor, then you have to go through that whole process, and then this will just keep going.
Okay, so, um, just for the record, the, the decision has come back. It came in on October 8th, there's 45 days, um, to act on it, so.
Yeah, but there's also in there the, an appeal.
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Until that is all.
Yep.
We're waiting for.
Well, we, so, we don't have a 5J right now prepared. I would ask that it be continued then until November 7th is the next planning board hearing, is my correct?
Yeah, but do, you think you're gonna get everything and has, what has to happen? I don't know, but.
I mean, could we be put on for the November 7th and then continue if we have to? Because the 45-day, um, time period, um, you have 30 days to appeal.
Yep.
So the court gives 45 days, so you have time to commiserate on whether or not you're gonna appeal or not. That 45-day period ends November 22nd. And so that's after your last meeting in November. And so I guess you just have another, your, your time period for you to, to you, for you to act is November 22nd, but you only have one hearing in November, that's November 7th. So I don't know if, um, I don't know what's going on on your end. Um, I did talk to counsel briefly, um.
It will be in the board's hands what they wanna do.
Yep, okay.
So, but until such time, I'm saying, there's a lot of hoops to jump and stuff to get back to, which, so.
All right, well, then I just. All right, um, what is, do you have a meeting, have anything scheduled in December?
December 5th.
Paying attention, huh?
I am paying attention to you.
Yeah, what is the first?
December 5th.
December what?
5th.
5th.
December 5th, okay. Can we put, be put on for that?
Well, we got more to do, but.
We, we, yeah.
You're gonna need extensions, so, we'll do that right now. Extension through the end of December?
Yes.
And you wanna be put on?
Just to go into January, because we won't be meeting until January.
Oh, that's true. We need it through the end of the middle of January?
Our next meeting, Jan, January 16th, December, January meeting.
Yeah, through the end of January, that way, because we're not meeting, and then need be the 5th. So, can you give it to the end of January so we're all covered?
Yes.
But if they file an A&R, we only have 20 days to act on it, so we would have to have a special meeting.
Yeah, well, okay.
Cross that little bridge down the wall when we get there.
All right.
All right, so I'll make a motion to allow the applicant until January 31st, 2025?
Second.
Your second, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll pencil you, we're not jumping that gun, but for the 5th of December.
Going for the 5th, okay.
Okay, so, well, we do it the end, we did now, so, okay. So that's what you wanna, you're gonna hold that until whatever happens.
So I'm putting her on for the 5th of December, okay.
Yeah, but we're not.
Oh, not yet.
It's gonna be on, but that's what they want, all right?
Okay.
So, um, I've read everything before I open up to the public. John?
Oh, before, is there any other comments? I just wanna make sure there's nothing else, any other comments from the board before we.
Well, that's, I'm doing the board right now.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Then after that, we'll open up to the public. John?
Going back to Kyle's comments, uh, number seven. I wasn't sure if you quite understood where this, um, crosswalk is gonna be.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the, the crosswalk is just on the west side or south side of the railroad bridge, where it is right now, essentially, but it's gonna get longer by.
Right where it's shown on this plan here, okay.
Correct.
And that's the one we're talking, okay.
Yes.
I thought it was something to do with, string straight on. Do we have any elevations in the transit? No? All of the commercial is on one level, is that correct?
Stuckin'ino.
All the commercial is on one level, is that correct?
Yes.
Not on the very bottom, it's on the.
Well, there's some on the very bottom also.
Depending on which way you look at it, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
But.
But the major part is on that, uh, level that's, uh.
Raised up from west, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so there's nothing, anything below that is parking, is that correct?
It's mostly parking, but at the corner there, at the intersection of Spring and West, there's a small commercial portion, lobby slash lobby area that we're proposing on the lowest level also.
Was that included when the calculation was made as to how much square footage you had for residential units?
The, uh, commercial was broken out separately from the residential.
Right, but the, the residential is based on the amount of commercial that's in place.
Right, right.
Was that the lowest level? Well, okay, I'm looking at S1, is there a level? Is all of these shaded areas low level?
This, this level is retail space, this is the lowest level.
Lowest level, okay, so that's below the lobby level then?
That's below the lobby level.
Okay, so there are two spaces there.
Well, there could be two, could be one, could be ten, yeah.
There's commercial space.
Commercial. Commercial space here, then behind it is maintenance and storage. And amended stuff.
I guess I have no other questions at this time.
Okay, Phil?
I should have a couple of questions on the parking and the, the drop-off place. So if we look on that sheet, uh, three, C3, I think it's a good view of, so, so, you know, it is good that you added that, that drop-off spot, the 54 feet by 12 feet. Um, look at all that you catch up. The grass support is 6, 6.2 if you want.
Which one? Is this? Yeah, this would be a view of the upper level, no?
It's the upper level, yeah, and there's the drop-off. Yes, if you look at sheet three, it shows, you, you got the color, so it kinda shows where the curves, the curve cuts.
Oh, this one, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, by the way, I, I, you know, I think it's, that really does do a big help for some of the issues that we raised in the first meeting. And I know, at the last meeting, we raised the question signage, of having signage there, and I don't know whether you're looking to show that on the plan.
Yeah, what we do, on the plans, we show that.
And I might have missed it, by the way. My eyes aren't good enough to read the half-sheets that we have. So I think the signage would be one with how long they can be there, and, and also, I believe, we, we talked, it was mentioned about having them go to the inside spot if they need to, you know, the, the, that's, uh, the lower level parking.
Okay, so the main sign was more directional. We make it clear that the, the easternmost driveway is for exit only. So the intent is for the vehicles to come in at the westernmost.
Yeah, I guess what I was suggesting, a sign though, to say this is a drop-off place, you know, you can't park more than 15 minutes. Is it for delivery trucks too? Should delivery trucks, should there be a sign saying, "Delivery trucks go to the inside spot near the dumpsters"? You know, just kind of, you know, 'cause otherwise I could see this being a problem where, you know, if there's no direction or no rules, then, um, who's, you know, who can park there how long? And is, is this, you know, is this for also pickup? Or is if somebody, a resident was gonna be picked up by a family member, would that, could they park there, or is that simply for package trucks?
Okay, well, let me take a step back. Originally, the intent for any deliveries was we had a, a drop-off loading area.
Yeah.
At the lower level of the parking garage. And then after listening to the board comments and the abutters, we, we agreed that it would be beneficial to have a drop-off area. So this is not intended to be a parking area. It's just, say, Amazon truck pulls in, they went inside, drop off their package, and take off. So we, we can add information.
But I'm also looking at, yes, I, I go to one of the other department, department buildings in town, and it's almost impossible to go there and drop off a loved one who lives there or to pick them up without finding a parking space somewhere. I can see this being a problem here as well.
With that situation, they can either use this drop-off area, or they could even park in front of the dumpster area.
But that's just, you know, it'd be, it'd be, people wouldn't even know about it unless there was signage.
Yes.
And again, that's just one area, so, okay, it just, it seems like there needs to be some direction about what each area is used for, and how long people should be there, or something. That's my suggestion.
So we can add information.
Yeah, and again, I, only because I experienced this a lot at another development in town.
And we also believe, but the main item will be just enter skating the residents and businesses that are there. But we will, certainly will add.
So that would be, I think, very helpful, Jeff. 'Cause I can't see people knowing, you know, the facility if they could go down underneath to level, to level one. And my other question is, where do visitors park? And I know, I think we brought that up a little bit, and, and there were some mention of maybe getting some spaces in the MBTA parking lot. I don't, I don't know if that was, because that's beyond our purview. But visiting parking, I know, again, experienced with another development, is a big issue.
Yep, the zoning bylaw requires two, um, parking spaces per unit, and so we're going to comply with the zoning.
Yeah, no, and, and, and you're absolutely right, you know, you're within the zoning, but I just, just as a safety, you know, making it more amenable to the, to the residents at some point, um, you might wanna think about that, you know, just, um, or whoever the building owners are when you start renting it out. You know, where, where will visitors park? So will they be able to park in the, in the?
Yes, yep.
Will all the parking spaces be assigned?
Some of the units are only one bedroom, so there's extra parking that way.
So there will be some visitor parking?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. No, and I, 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 it's only because I've seen so much of this in other, other, other places with the problems.
I could just address that. We've done a lot of multifamily developments in Attleboro and Mansfield there, in the TOD districts, and what we're finding is, um, there's always extra parking. And it's, it really depends on the bedrooms and the type of residence you have. Usually young professionals, and they're usually taking MBTA into, into Boston or Providence. So there's extra parking available on, uh, on the lot, so that, it works out pretty well.
Yeah, I think the challenge would be making sure that there's some way to keep visitors know where that is.
Right, 'cause there's no designated parking, I mean, when, once you pull in, it's not gonna.
There won't be designated parking, but, okay, yeah. Phil, thank you. And then otherwise, I think, I, I think you've addressed most of the other thing, issues we had, thank you.
Okay. Kate?
I don't have any real questions, I just have the same struggles I've been having since the beginning with the whole project. I just think it's too much congestion. I think it's, um, an undue concentration. it's an undue concentration of population. I think it goes against the community character. I think that, you know, we already have 344 rental units right there, add another 95, and I just think that almost 440 rental units within not even a half-mile area is too much. I just think it goes against Walpole. I think it hurts the community. So I'm struggling with this one. I have been since day one. I don't have any questions.
Paul?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, I think they've all been basically entered, Jeff.
I have a couple. Cal, I'll give you one. I'm looking for three-foot grass strip. I know that's what they always show. That guy's stupid. They last until you salt it and it never comes back. Wouldn't we better off just make it all concrete? Look like Frank Sinatra, come on.
Look at your subdivision rules and regs, Mr. Chairman. They call for a grass strip.
That's different subdivisions, because you're not, but this is a main road. It's gonna get salted like crazy. I just look at that, that's the stuff that get, that I'm not a big fan of. Grass strip, you know, it's just gonna be nothing. Even if they try to plant it, it's gonna die out. For my house, I live in 27, I have to put up stones there because I can't grow grass. That's all I'm saying. Do you see an issue with that or not? Because it's more like downtown anyway. I don't think we get downtown with little tree graves.
I guess it could.
Okay.
Although, you never know that the property owners or the property managers may maintain that as well, even though we don't like it. Some put their own irrigation out there. I don't know, I kind of like it the way it is.
Put their own irrigation on town property, they've done that road.
Well, it's not supposed to happen, but it does all the time.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just for the, you know, and they're in a CBD, so I don't think we have a grass strip required for that. But anyway, all right, we'll only do so, if you could move the, up a little, the dumpster. When you're looking, I have a look, and it's like, have you already done your little toy truck to make sure it get in there? I don't know how a guy's gonna make a swing coming in there.
Oh, yes, it definitely can.
He can come in from the right and then back around?
Yeah, I mean, just to give you a feel, that's the size of a ladder truck. And so a dumpster is certainly much smaller. But yes, that was one of the first things we've looked at.
Okay, as long as you're confident. I just happened to look at it, I said, hmm, it's a tight one, but...
Yeah, so that's one reason we have the, you know, the radius, to make sure that...
Okay, I just happened to see, and I'm looking at the way the guy's gonna probably back in, but unless he comes in, even if he comes in forward, doesn't matter, still go back up. All right, that's all I had. Questions? Anybody from the public? Come on up, name, address, and up to the podium.
I've been up before. My name's Lucy McNamara. I'm from 16 Clear Pond Drive. And before I make this presentation, I just want to say thank you to everyone I've talked to in the board, in the town. I've talked to Lieutenant Becker from the police department. I've had emails to the deputy director, whatever you call, fire chief. I've talked to various people here, and I really appreciate all their input. So let's talk about the Walpole Master Plan, which is the hope and vision of the town. Unfortunately, it's not enforceable. It is a direction the town wants to go, and for instance, as Catherine has stated, preserves a small-town feeling, strong sense of community, the character and value of its built environment, and New England charm by managing growth with sound land use policies, respecting its longtime residents, and welcoming new people. It is a town that remains a safe and great place to bring up children, which is why I moved here a couple of years ago. Also in there is a comment, "The town will need to be thinking about creative design options to continue growing its economy and housing stock while protecting many of the qualities Walpole residents say they appreciate," which I know other people here from my community will comment on. So in July, we talked about our checklist, which Nadine's familiar with. She had the handout in her hands in the September meeting. Reduce the size of the development is really our greatest hope. Reduce construction hours of operation, which for anybody not aware, in Massachusetts, you're allowed to run a jackhammer from seven in the morning till eight at night without interruption, no problems. We really would prefer not having that since in less than a quarter of a mile are some of the condos and many of the people work at home. They don't go to the office like they used to. Restrict idling and offloading of construction vehicles to the construction site, and this suggestion came from various people I talked to as I was learning about this development. This has been done in other construction sites around town. Revise the traffic study and recommendations, and there is conditional approval of the traffic patterns around this development. Expand parking for delivery and retail, which you all did. And we have one other request, which is provide off-site parking for construction workers. And this came up in a conversation where it was stated that at the Byrd School, when they were having construction, they bust all their construction workers from the Big Y, and that's where their construction workers parked. And since construction, and since parking is an issue in that area, I'm strongly requesting that the board put that on as a condition, that the developer has to figure out how to handle parking, so it is not impacting the residents of Swan Pond. So on the checklist, delivery area has been resigned, thank you very much. Developer through Nadine said the hours of operations would be reduced and not from seven in the morning till eight at night. We're holding you to that. It was on there, you said it on the 19th. It's in YouTube, watch your YouTube. Developer promised to restrict idling and offloading construction vehicles to the site, you also said that. Planning board gave conditional traffic approval. We're requesting off-site parking for construction workers or however, just watch?
I didn't.
Watch it again.
No, I think I watched it enough. It's not, it's not what I said.
It is what you said.
We're not gonna have a...
Lighted crosswalk sign across West Street to train. Not a plain crosswalk sign, but one that's lighted just like at 95 West Street. It's a, you're moving the crosswalk closer to an area where people accelerate. They pass the crosswalk at 95 West Street, and they accelerate as they go through the training bridge. And we have police now patrolling that area to patrol people because the traffic study revealed that, that there were people who went to speeds beyond 35 miles per hour in that area.
You should address your comments to the board.
That's a 20...
You should address your comments to the board.
Yeah, it's a 25 mile an hour area, and we're concerned that people accelerate after they pass through the crosswalk at 95 West. And we're concerned, as a member of the board pointed out, that we don't want pedestrians to have any collisions with traffic. And in my mind, it is better to prevent that than to wait for it to occur. It's to design the safest environment for all the people living there. So here's my perspective, and I'm representing my community. What benefit does this development have to the goals of the Walpole Master Plan? As it currently stands and could change in the future, this development does not contribute to affordable housing. This development has a dense population concentration. This development does not provide adequate parking for business patrons, even though you assert that you will have extra parking. I would like to submit that if you're in a studio apartment, or actually one-bedroom apartment, paying $3,200 a month, if that's 50% of your gross income, that means you have to earn $76,800 a year in order to afford that apartment. Knowing the 30-somethings I know, that is a rare individual. There aren't many of those people around. My 30-something is living with me. The other thing is, there would be a change in the nature of the adjacent community, and I think there are people here to talk about that. As I talk to the elders in my community, who are absolutely lovely, they're heartbroken about the loss of a small-town feel. There's just something charming about that area. And I know when I went looking for condos, I kept coming back to Swan Pond because of the warmth and friendliness and sense of community there that was lacking in so many places I went to. Now, how did I come up with these opinions? Besides talking to the board, I talked to a municipal lawyer, a real estate lawyer, a person who does the design of financing for large condo and apartment developments. I talked to the Secretary of State. I went through the tree of connection of all the people in the developer's company, and all the connections from previous iterations of development to now. I also learned that you can do something that's kind of like a placeholder, and it's legal in Massachusetts. It's not legal in any other state in the United States. And that is, you can claim that you are going to have an area for future development, and therefore, you're immune to any changes in statutes or laws in the state by claiming on a certain date that you're gonna develop. So that can be frozen for three years, up to eight years. So, the affordable housing problem actually has a Commonwealth of Massachusetts facet to it. You can't have it both ways. You want affordable housing, you have to close that loophole, because every developer, every real estate lawyer, is going to put a placeholder on development so that they can be immune from some of the affordable housing things coming their way. I admire the board. You're asking questions, and in some ways, you're being advocates for the neighborhood. But I do realize, unless we open our pocketbooks and get a development consultant and a couple of lawyers, there won't be a reduction in size of this development. And many of the things we just asked for will be ignored. We're doing our best, but I wonder about the motivation of those developing this land. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, could you just go back to those things you said you went on, we'll be checking up on that address.
Nadine?
It's a pleasure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't worry, let me just pull up. Because I don't mind going back to the YouTube video and the times that you actually said it.
The hours of operations, that whole day. I have exactly what I said written down here. What I said was that usually with the hours of operation for construction, it goes by the subcontractor, general contractor's hours, which is usually seven to three, but that there's a Walpole bylaw, it's section 44-3, activity in residential area, the hours at 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM. That's flipped, that's wrong. If that were that, that would be...
About 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
Right.
So through the night.
You can't do anything.
Right, you can't do anything from 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM. That's what I read into the record.
Right, which means you can do things from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you can't work from 8:00 PM to 7:00.
Enough, enough. First, I gotta kill that right now. We don't set the hours, that's select. So it has nothing to do with the planning board, so let's move on. Sir?
Stephen O'Connor, 35 Clear Pond Drive in Swan Pond. I will say the development's out of character with the neighborhood. I would say a couple of concerns that have been brought before, but just to try to illustrate them one more time. The traffic and parking is still really not adequately addressed. The traffic study didn't capture the reality of that intersection of Spring and West. It depends really on the time of day. There are blind spots that are brutal at certain times of day with the curve of the road, even with the property as it is now. It's tough to make a right or left turn out of there. People come around the corner very fast, you can't see them until the last minute. This building is gonna block that. The sun makes that worse at times. Adding a lighted crosswalk will help some, but people don't slow down now for people. It's just waiting for a serious accident or fatality. I see it every day for the last five years. It's just, it's gonna happen at some point. Delivery area is provided, which is helpful. You know, we see it at Union West, without it, everybody just pulls on the side of the road. I think this delivery area still won't be used that much. People are gonna use the most convenient thing they can get. If that's on Spring Street, it will be. If they pull into the delivery, as I see it, I think you have to kind of come around the building to get to your drop-off. I don't think you can park on that front of the building and leave a package there. You come around, and I don't think that'd actually be used. People are just gonna do whatever's convenient. And it's an enforcement issue, but it's gonna be tough to enforce. Some of the effects, impacts on Swan Pond, I think at the last meeting, the proponent talked about addressing some of the concerns with dogs by saying that this development would have a small area for relief for people to walk their dog or do something. In reality, those people come to Swan Pond. They do now with the influx of the development, with the two big apartments now. We've had so many more people in the last few years coming through all times of day, not picking up, and it's tough to track down. But here you add another almost 200 people plus pets. We're a beautiful area. One of the things about Swan Pond with that neighborhood is, you won't find another development, I don't think, within, with the proximity to Boston and the center of town, with so much open space, that's a beautiful, quiet place to walk. It's great for the residents, and we get, you know, all these other residential places that have come in, and add another, you know, 95 or 200 people here. It's just a burden on us. We get so many more people coming in. It's a private community, private roads. We maintain them, we're not gated, but it's a big burden on us, and will continue to be. And it will add cost over time if we go to try to enforce that or become gated, or we don't really want to become a gated community. But it's a, you know, it's gonna be built and dropped right next to us, and it's just high, high density, and they have no open space. We're the alternative right next door to it. And the lack of parking and stuff is just gonna make it that much worse, so definitely will be a bad impact on Swan Pond. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Carol Davis, 21 Mallard. I know I moved here in 2019, and I like the community, I like the area. It was different from Boston, Roselandale, where I previously lived, and I like the quietness and the proximity to the train. And, you know, the Foxborough Line makes the train station even more congested, and a lot of people leaving there and tearing out up onto West Street. And I'm concerned about getting to work in the morning because if I have to go down Spring Street, I assume it will be loaded with trucks. I'll have to go up and around. All to my method that I, my path that I take now, and I'm afraid of encountering trucks in the darkness in the morning, and, you know, having that be, you know, difficult for me to get to the train station. There are trains that tear through there in the morning, and I don't know how all this noise is gonna affect everyone because the trains make a lot of noise, and with all this building going on, that will make a lot of noise. And I'm concerned about getting to the train station. I'm also concerned that maybe the power might go off. I have a split schedule. I work at home some time of the week, and I go into the office, and I... And what if there's a power outage? You know, that would affect my working from home, you know, if there was some kind of power disturbance. And, you know, with all the, you know, demand for the Wi-Fi in the area, that's another thing I think about too. So that's about it. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
And just for...
Before I walk away?
16 Clear Pond, John.
Come on, this is my meeting. I want to see if anybody else first before you jump on. Okay? Is anybody else? Because we're going to be fair about it, okay?
I appreciate the guidance. Referring back to April 19th, 2024, I presented to the Select Board your consideration of hours of operation and your interpretation of the bylaws. And the Select Board said, due to safety considerations, that it should go back to the planning board for consideration. And they did send the board a letter at that time. Thank you.
They sent us a letter? Do we? Kate, I never saw that letter.
The Selectmen sent us a letter? Yeah.
I don't, we don't have it. I wouldn't miss that.
I will make sure that I get you a copy. Can you come to us from now?
Even if they say that, it's not within our rules and regulations, but...
They said that this was not an overall change of the bylaws of the town. This was an individual consideration for that construction site itself.
No, we don't have that, so we can't act on it or say anything to it, so. When were they sent it? Do you have the date?
It was sent to me. I will get a copy to Kate.
Okay. That's fine.
Could I just make a comment?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that, you know, this area is zoned as a central business district. So what they're proposing is within our zoning bylaws. Certain issues of traffic and safety are things that our board looks at. And as far as, you know, congestion and affordable housing, you know, building, as seen by the MDT law, you want to build more housing near your train station. So actually, this is a good place for a development to add more apartments, and it also can add towards making housing more affordable because we add to our housing stock. Now, it'd be really nice if the developers would like to add the, you know, to do the affordable housing, even though not required to right now for the inclusion of zoning bylaws that's passed. You know, that would be something that's going to be worked out with dates. But in any case, I just wanted to make sure people realize that our zoning bylaws allows this development where it is, in the central business district. And our board, you know, we look at things like safety and certainly some of the aspects of the aesthetics, but that's not our major role to do that.
All right, I'm going to address a few things. This goes back to April 19th from the police. Everybody seems to talk about how bad it is down there. Well, if it's bad now and you're saying it's going to get worse, I guess nothing's changed. But April 19th, WAPA Police Department asked if there's adequate lighting for sidewalks and pedestrians. They wanted one of those solar LED flashing crosswalk lights, like the town has been putting around at the bridge on West Street. Other than that, they have no other public safety concern. So the police right now say there's no issues. You people say there is. Well, it doesn't do us any good because we don't control traffic, so if, once again, you should be taking that up with the police department because it's nothing to do with these guys, they can't go out and arrest them. Parking, you mentioned Big Y. Yeah, that was proposed by one of the successful construction managers up there, Fontaine Brothers. That was a caveat offered to the schools. Yeah, we're going to make arrangements up at Big Y. They did that on their own, they weren't required to do that. As far as parking, is, they have to park legally. So if nobody's, people aren't parked legally, including the construction guys, that becomes a police enforcement issue. Construction hours, like I said, that's set by the town, that's in a whole other section, we can't do that. Truck idling, I believe the, Water Health has something to that effect. They may have it in their own rules, it's changed. Everybody's added that to 15 minutes, whatever else it is. So you have that portion of it. Like Phil said, it's done per the central business district. Parking, you have to provide parking for the apartments and for the business. You get to use the central parking lot, the towns. So they've conformed to that, so. Just want to clarify it so everybody understands that, what's going on. Other than that, yeah, might as well talk to the police about that stuff. Water Health, you can always ask them if they have a bylaw in place. I think they do, I think I've seen that before. That's a big thing, like I said, all over the place. So if it's there, they're going to have to comply to that. And I don't know what else. I think I've covered all the issues as regards to master plan, it's only, I don't know where that comes from, it hasn't been approved, but it's something to go by. Once upon a time, this board wanted to relook at downtown, and we wanted to put a moratorium on it, and that was met by no. So that has to be changed, that should be coming from the economic development or community planning division, and no one seems to have wanted to do that, so. I'm not saying this is great, it's just legal. I'm not disagreeing, not disagreeing with anybody. Everybody liked to keep it the way it is, but no one seemed to want to step forward. We tried it once, going back all, right when these first got approved. You know what happened? We hit COVID, and everybody goes, "There's no problem." Because nobody was driving. That was probably the one that kept this on the down-low, unfortunately, so. Any other questions or comments at this time? We're going to be, continue this. Development team, I'll set. Mam, you're going to have to come up.
Karen Ludwig, I live at Swan Pond, 18 Morganser. Just a comment, and it deals with delivery, particularly with Union West. Yesterday, when I was coming home, out of the center and going down, on the right-hand side, in front of Union West, was a post office, truck, a FedEx truck right behind it, and across the street, just almost right again, right parallel to them, was a UPS truck. And I had to get around them, go around them, and then go under, and there was a truck coming around underneath the trestle. Supposedly, Union West has a drop-off site. None of them use it.
Where is it?
Supposedly, it's just, as you come up to the building from the center...
Yep.
There's that entrance way, I think, I think there's a drop-off right there in those parking right there. It's close enough to the front, but everybody parks right there on West Street. And thank you for putting in that drop-off zone. I don't think they'll use it. They'll, like the prior guy said, I think they'll park wherever they want. But I have seen it, and I wish I had taken a picture of it, because I almost, you know, if this guy had been sooner, the truck had been sooner of getting around underneath the trestle and around the corner, it would have been really fun with the two of us sitting there.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. One of the things, they have a little turnoff to get somebody coming in and out over there, they have to make it, none of these guys want to.
Yeah.
And Amazon guys don't care.
Oh, I know, but FedEx and UPS don't care.
Very easily, don't buy Amazon. But everybody, oh, no, no. But what you might want to do, I suggest, and I've come that way myself, I don't like it to, I don't think there's curb on the apartment side, is there?
There is.
Is there a raised curb for the whole thing?
Yep.
But they still park, it just seems like so easy just to park.
They just pull up, that's what they like to do.
Well, maybe...
And nobody uses, a lot of people use that flashing crosswalk.
Yep.
But I have seen people, because they park down at the other end of that parking lot across the street, they're parking, they're cutting across where the street goes in, and you've got the trestle, and they're walking across. And tonight, I had somebody, I stopped, let them cross. They weren't in the crosswalk, but they were crossing. I'm worried with them moving, on the other thing, talking about the crosswalk. I'm worried about them moving the crosswalk closer to the trestle. I think that's going to be more dangerous, because the people coming out of West, Spring Street, are not going to see them as easily. And the people that fly down West Street to go underneath the trestle, they barely stop for anybody. So the flat, I think the crosswalk should stay where it is with a flashing thing, not come under, closer to the trestle. Because it's going to be darker, and people are, yes, you might get the lights going, but I think Spring Street might not, they won't see it when they're taking a corner. And that's what I'm, a comment I'd like to have in.
Okay.
Thank you.
What you said is, once upon a time, it was the train people I used to hate. Now they're nothing, it's the deliveries. But my suggestion would be maybe you start talking with the police to say, can we have installed no standing signs? Which means, hey, hey, Amazon, UPS is out there, tickets, tickets, tickets. They put along there, all of a sudden it stops.
So we have to go to the police to have the signs put?
Ask them what the next step is. My guess would be it was a selectman, but you can talk to them about the logistics of it and everything else. They can't write a ticket unless it says no standing. They, because they go, come on, come on, come on. But if it says no standing, no standing is no standing.
Okay.
It's like downtown, if a guy wanted to just double park and he's delivering, there's no sign that says no standing. So they really can't give him a ticket. But it says no standing, that means nothing.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. December 5th. At what time, Kate?
Um, 7:10.
7:10. Okay, we'll continue this public hearing, 7:10 on December 5th. We'll see what happens with the rest of the stuff. All right, thank you.
There's trouble.
You going home, Sal?
I'm going home.
Oh, my God, it looks terrific, too.
Because my name...
Thank you.
Oh, I know.
How you doing?
I missed you, I hope you're all the way.
Kate, you're off.
Oh, my mother's birthday, yeah, yeah.
What do you mean, Mom?
Was it good? Oh, good, 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 right. All right, good to see you.
That's okay.
Good to see you.
I'll see you, I'm going home. You have to go home, Sally. Don't mind, it's Dale, what's he doing?
No, they picked it up for you.
Oh.
Yeah, but you didn't...
Have you come for me? Oh, my God, this is a... And they have one of my gym socks.
What do you want to do?
No, these are just...
Gym socks, oh. Checking out. Yeah.
What's going on? What's going on down in straight? We got cars all over the place. They're knocking up every utility. They told my neighbor, everything that he had, but he wouldn't start a water line this time of year.
Oh, you're not the one, yeah. I don't think it's on the...
Yeah. Yeah, they've been there like... I would say from Old Diamond to East. It's even on my lawn. Like they took the street, they're making that, like, you know, the little water cap, I call it a water cap one.
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm just knowing, you get it, no, Peter?
Not as loud, no. You know, there are two more contracts coming up soon. On Officer Bag, one on the, there is a straight spring now, review, peak, bow, peach, and maybe probably there's something else.
I just thought it was, yeah, I just thought it was strange that they would start something this time of year.
No, the one you might see starting, they would be...
Yeah. And especially with the, especially with the school there. Like, that would be a nightmare, traffic-wise for them, not for me.
You gave me back everything, right?
If you hear anything, let me know, no big deal, just notice.
I know, I took a look at, I took a look at...
Oh, yeah, yeah, the yellow one.
Were you quiet?
Really?
Oh, my goodness.
Guess we'll never do it. Come over the table and do that.
It's crazy.
You live that, Cal, but I know you...
I think the listing said it came of tenants.
The hour being after... The hour being after 7:15 and 7:16, we have a continued public hearing, site plan for 2410, Jitten Hotel, a special permit, 24-11, Jitten Hotel. We also have, since it's opened, we also have an A&R presented. Now, do you want to, what do you want to do first?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could just, just discuss the A&R, obviously pursuant to our last meeting, the applicant, you know, did consider subdividing the law, and at some point, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be advantageous for the applicant to subdivide the law. So with that being said, you know, in terms of timing, we want to see what the board's thoughts were, and again, we're here for the site plan, special permit, and I have the engineer, the architects here today. But just preliminarily, you know, I'm not sure how the board would want to handle it. Obviously, if Jitten gets permitted under one law, he would like to try to, you know, it has the A&R approved, he'd like to try to avoid coming back at some point for modification. So I understand the board can't give us guidance, but, you know, again, pursuant to the last meeting, we thought it would be a good idea to file the A&R. And obviously, our goal is to try to get this approved. Effectively, it is two laws, and if Jitten is, you know, obtaining, requesting financing or changing an entity or going to sell one of the laws someday, it may require a subdivision. So, you know, just, just preliminarily, I just thought I'd bring it to the board's attention and see if the board had any thoughts.
One of the things you can do in A&R, and you'll never have to, it's, under one ownership, it's always considered merged. And I know I had something from Cal, and that's why I wanted to saw that first about, you had some comments in that, Cal, and I can't find mine. I think they sailed with West Side.
Mr. Chairman, I did provide comments on the original submission. I don't know if the board ever got that one. So it's a plan you never saw, but they revised everything that I had asked them to do. There were, you know, plan references, moving the title block, making it five, five members on the board, presentation-type things, the scale of the locust plan, those types of things. I think there was a plan reference that needed to be corrected. I asked them to add, correct a spelling error on the utility easement, and add references and note that it was a public easement. Those sort of things are all on that list, and they've all been resolved. I received a PDF of it, I reviewed it. Let Scott Rogers with J.K. Holmber know, and...
But we don't have it in front of us.
We do, I believe.
The one I'm looking at is the 2nd of October.
This is what we have.
Is that the, October 3rd?
No, this is for the A&R. So Phil, you're looking at the site plan, this is the A&R.
No, this one was dated the 2nd of October.
But that was, so they have the same date, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe. Scott, you might help me out on that. Did you...
Yeah, one, oh, the other thing is, alright, you can do it at any time with an A&R, alright, there's nothing built there. Here's the thing, that's their risk, is if we miss, we're not the plan checkers, so if he goes to get a permit, finds out, whoops, that's their problem.
Correct. If for some reason he does this and goes, inadvertently goes into non-conformity, I mean, that's what that little stamp or, or note on the plan says.
You'd have to get that correct, you understand?
I, I, yeah.
The, the other thing I'll point out, and they don't have to address it with an A&R, they've got Mr. O'Connell or Attorney O'Connell, you can retire doing cross easements for this, because you're gonna need a lot of them. Alright, because they share water systems, they share wastewater systems, essentially even pieces of the stormwater shared. So if you do ever break it up, there's gonna have to be cross easements and things like that considered. But you don't have to do that on the A&R, you can do that with a, no new lines and ways plan, or you can come in here and get another an A&R sign if you want.
Does it matter if some of the park, existing parking is on the newly proposed lot? I can't tell offhand.
Well, that's a...
Well, we don't, for the A&R, well, why don't we just keep it as the A&R? If it's got the frontage, it's right zone, that's all we can roll on. The site plan, that's their gamble, roll the dice. So, you confident the A&R is fine? Okay. Do you want it right? You know, I only suggested, you can do it now, you can do it later, whatever you guys wanna do.
I, I think we should do it now.
Okay.
It's a lot of stuff.
Okay.
You know, again, I guess it's a question of whether we, like you said, come back or file five, or file two now.
Well, what would happen is if you do file for building permit, file that, ooh, you'd have to review the A&R. And to make, you'd have to correct the zoning.
To sign?
Or, you couldn't put your building where you wanted to, so, but...
You can sign it.
Okay.
You don't have to run down and record it unless there are other reasons to do it.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Alright, make a motion to endorse the A&R?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, alright, side by side.
Cause you bought the first one.
Cause you bought the king.
You are too funny. Where am I gonna go? I'll go down over here.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, and again, I, I can't remember the full of, uh, town engineer, thank you, Bill O'Connell, for the applicant for the ten. And you know, I've got here, I also have the architects here this evening, Zach Sylvia from DJF Architects, Zach's the principal, and, um, just one more point on the A&R, Mr. Chairman, and again, I, you can't give us guidance. Again, my, my client's goal is to try to avoid having to come back at some point, um, if the special purpose site plan, this will be the second special purpose site plan granted for this one parcel. So, I, I, I don't expect you to answer it, that's something we're gonna have to determine, but I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, or this town engineer. Again, we can, we can serve you if necessary, but we're trying to avoid having to come back.
Other than, you know, Bill adds, just freeze the zoning, so if anything ever happened, you guys, all set for a while?
Cause she's got the, she's got the...
You threw you, to Mr. O'Connell's question, I guess there's a couple of lines of thought and said, the special permit and the site plan approval would go with the land and it would run to both lots. That would be one interpretation.
Yeah, thank you, okay.
Yeah, that's true, this is gonna be one big site plan.
With, with a, a special permit site plan that this board rented in 2016 for the existing hotel, and then...
But now you've combined, it's gonna be a new special permit, right? I'm not, huh?
Right.
If you guys go to sell it, I don't know how you do that, if you're just gonna come back and refile a site plan just to split it? I assume, which is not a big deal. Just cut it in half or however you do it.
Okay.
Right? We just have to... It would be called a modification of a site plan.
Okay.
So whatever you're doing, if it's, typically modifications, we call, call major if there's something you added on, but if you're just splitting something like this, and there's nothing other than to identify this and this, it's not a, not a big deal. But this way, if the, the price is right, you'll be running in here, come on and do it.
Hey, sorry, did you have another question that's concerning throughout the time?
No, so, so we would be able to split the lots prior to, I mean, saying that we get through the whole process, we're able to pull permits, we're, we're able to separate the lots prior to construction, correct?
No, you're gonna be, it's considered merged lot, we're doing a site plan based upon the full lot. Okay? Um, I don't know if it makes sense for you now, just to modify it and, nah, to me, what do you think, Kyle, just let it go as it is?
I don't know, it's, I thought about this before, when we were reviewing the A&R, and it's a question that I haven't come up with, cause I don't think I've ever seen an A&R in the middle of a site plan approval.
Okay, take that aside, it's, say they're two different lots, but he owns them both, the same thing, right? But he wants to do it as one, but, um, how much is on, we're not doing everything on the left side, correct? Existing?
Well, so, so the A&R didn't show, you, the line has not been superimposed on the site plan, so we're not exactly sure if these fall apart independently, and not, my suspicion is, they won't, they'll be close, but they won't perfectly do it, cause, cause part of the stormwater, you know, you, so you've drawn it along that line, Mr. Rogers, that's fine, so, but the line will go through part of the stormwater management, which serves both lots, so it's a little bit messy there, but it, it cleans up pretty well. If you did come in for a modification, we'd probably start talking about the cross easements at that time as part of that process. That would be my opinion. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, this is a good one.
No, the other thing is, they, they get the entrance coming off of Route 1, it's serving both. So, to me, go with what you got, and you want, someday you go to sell it. You ain't gonna sell it for five bucks, so if you get a lot of money, you don't wanna do this. And, the fact that, at that time, we'd talk about the, you'd have to give easements, we'd be watching easements to come in off of the road, that type of stuff, cross easement, that's when it gets, nothing difficult.
By blessing.
Yeah, just to make sure that it all works for both sides of the fence here.
Don't they each have their own entrance?
No, but you can come in, Kate, on the first one, and zip in, yeah. So, just a matter of easement allowing access.
And modifications, Mr. Chairman, at that time?
That would be part, yeah, you do that as a, your modification, all you have is present easements, cross connections, like Kyle said.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we, we would fully get all easements done and recorded, to make sure we can fully comply with zoning. And the original hotel was built, originally when we purchased the land, it was two lots, and we combined the two lots. Our intention is really just to separate the lots again. The first hotel was built in full compliance of zoning, as a standalone hotel, and the new hotel is being designed, again, for full compliance on its own lot. So if they are separated, and we're, we're getting a zoning opinion letter drafted as well, so if they are separated, both, both hotels will be able to operate independently each other in full compliance.
Yeah, that's what you, yeah, that's what I said before, you just wanna make sure you're not killing yourself, one needs something from the other, cause you could really never separate it at that point.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, so...
And with that, I'll, I'll let Scott take over, I have the architects here, to address the comments from the town, from, from Mr. Town Engineer. I know Scott has been working with Town Engineer, has revised the plans, and has been working through those, those comments and the town's concerns with the Town Engineer.
Well, I'll read the comments we got from different boards, you may have them already. Fire Department, October 7th, the applicant has addressed all concerns, they're all set there. We have Kyle's you know about, uh, that was the A&R, I don't know what from the Fire Department, I don't know, that's the wrong one. I think that's the only one we have. I think we read a lot of ones before, so, that was the one, and Kyle's.
Water Health from 10A.
What? Who's that from?
Water Health.
I don't see it in my little pack, yeah.
And I did a one letter for both, both projects.
Well, that was, that was, that was water, sewer, sewer.
Water, sewer, yeah. Well, that was water and sewer, yeah.
This one says 10A, please.
Hopefully, I'm sorry, John, there, it's buried under something else.
Water Health.
The eighth?
Yeah.
They're not meeting before the 15th, or whatever, but they want to reiterate comments of the 3rd of September, and no concerns at this time, but they talked about trash and recycling, and that the applicant will have to give them plans for any food or pool operation. Okay? Fire Department, I think I said, and now we're just down to Kyle's. Do you want to do yours, Kyle?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I did deliver a memorandum to the board, October 16th, I also furnished it to the applicant, or to the designer, Scott Rogers, with J.K. Holmgren. There are about thirty-five comments, which might seem a lot, but really, the first site plan review was kind of a preliminary, this one is the one we looked at the detail. As usual, there are, and I won't bore you with all the details on the comments, but there were quite a few comments regarding labeling, presentation, moving endorsement blocks, various things that, to make the plans, you know, the scale of the locust map, you know, adding a special permit to the title block in the site plan, these things. Some of them are illustrating conformance with zoning section eight, I think the plan does, there's just nothing on the plan that shows it, that's the landscape requirement. So, all those, there are a number of things, there are some utility comments, some comments about moving both water and sewer either out of an eas, out of the easements, which are our town easements, or out of the buffer zone, or not so close to the buffer zone. But really, the most significant comment, I think, is number 11. During the last meeting, it was recognized that the forty-foot buffer prevailed, and that you could not do as much as they had done in it, so they relocated the dumpster enclosures to the north side of the building, and they were squarely in and over a sewer, a utility easement that carries sewer from other areas. So, I noted that that needs to be removed, and I briefly discussed it with Mr. Rogers, and I believe he's prepared to actually address that tonight. But if the board has any questions, or the applicant has any questions on these comments, I'd be more than glad to get into them, but they really are very typical site plan comments. The drainage is sound, I spent a lot of time with Scott going over that, but it really fully mitigates the stormwater, both rate and volumes coming off of the lot, similar to the last application. So, it's a robust drainage system. There is one spot where we got a question on the grading, we think there might be a puddle in the southwest corner, but that can always be remedied with a revision in the grading. So, if there are any questions, I'd be more than glad to go over them.
Go ahead.
Scott Rogers from J.K. Holmgren Engineering. As you know, we met before you, September 19th. I did prepare a letter that addressed some of the comments that we received from the planning board, one in regard to the locust map. The other comment that we received was regarding signs. The plan does show identification sign in front of the site, it shows stop signs, signs for ADA parking. One of the new comments made by the Fire Department was adding signs for fire lanes and no parking. So, in addition to that, we will have a sign plan that'll be done during the building permit process, that'll identify, you know, signs on buildings, additional signage that will be approved by the building department. We also did provide to the board, lighting plan that was done, so that's been there. We also addressed the snow storage areas, we had them on the plan, but we added some additional snow storage areas to the plan. The transformer was discussed, as well as the trash enclosure, and some of the areas in the buffer zone. So we pulled the transformer out of the buffer zone, it's located in a similar spot, I can show you that on the plan. We also did move the trash enclosure, and on this exhibit here, you can see the trash enclosure, the location that was moved to was from here over to here, and as Kyle suggested, we looked at taking that trash enclosure, rotating it about ninety degrees, you can see it here in red, that'll be outside of the easement, so that will hopefully address that particular concern. And then, last thing about the buffer zone, we did have rather, well, we had an infiltration basin located here, that infiltration basin was adjusted and put back behind the building, outside of the buffer. So we put a lot of look at what was going on in the buffer zone, and made additional improvements to that area itself. We also heard, one of the abutters to the property was here at the last meeting, one of the comments that they made was about lighting within the stairwells. This particular hotel has no windows in the stairwell, so that really doesn't apply to this hotel, but we did hear the comments, and the applicant has, he will basically be putting on some film, if you will, on the windows in the light, in the hallway to the existing hotel, that'll hopefully address the abutting, the abutters concern regarding that. We also received comments from the Fire Department, just briefly, we did add the fire signs that was requested. We did add an additional hydrant to the property that wasn't, wasn't there before. He made a comment about landscape, and I can assure you that when we design these properties, we show plant materials, we don't show them when they're planted tiny, we show them at mature height and width, so that you can see the effect that it'll have later on in its, its life. We also put a note on the plan regarding the overhead obstructions, that's on the sheets as well, and he made a comment about mulch around the building, that actually, that note was on our cover sheet, but we did add that particular mulch note to the, the plan set as well, not just on the cover. As Kyle had mentioned, so we did get some original comments from Town Engineer, those were, those were made, and we did receive additional comments...
It shows stop signs, signs for ADA parking. One of the new comments made by the Fire Department was adding signs for fire lanes and no parking. Uh, so, in addition to that, we will have a sign plan that will be done during the building permit process that will identify, uh, you know, signs on buildings, additional signage that will be approved by the building department. We also did provide to the board, uh, lighting plan that was done, so that's been there. Uh, we also addressed the snow storage areas. We had them on the plan, but we added some additional snow storage areas to the plan. The transformer was discussed as well as, uh, the trash enclosure and some of the areas in the buffer zone. So, we pulled the transformer out of the buffer zone. Uh, it's located in a similar spot, I can show you that on the plan. We also did move the trash enclosure, um, and on this exhibit here, you can see the trash enclosure, the location that was moved to was from here over to here, and as Carl suggested, you looked at taking that trash enclosure, rotating it about ninety degrees, you can see it here in red, uh, that'll be outside of the easement, so that will hopefully address that particular concern. And then, last thing about the buffer zone, we did have, uh, rather, well, we had an identif-, uh, infiltration basin was located here. That infiltration basin was adjusted and put back behind the building outside the buffer. So, we put a lot of look at what was going on in the buffer zone and made additional improvements to that area itself. We also heard, uh, one of the abutters to the property was here at the last meeting. Uh, one of the comments that they made was about, um, lighting within the stairwells. This particular hotel has no windows in the stairwell, so that really doesn't apply to this hotel, but we did hear the comments and the applicant has, uh, he will basically be putting on some, uh, film, if you will, on the windows in the light, uh, in the hallway to the existing hotel. That'll hopefully address the abutting, uh, the abutters concern regarding that. We also received comments from the Fire Department. Just briefly, we did add the fire signs that was requested. We did add an additional hydrant to the property that wasn't, wasn't there before. Uh, he made a comment about landscape, and I can assure you that when we design these properties, uh, we show plant materials. We don't show them when they're planted tiny, we show them at mature, uh, height and width so that you can see the effect that it'll have later on in, in its life. We also put a note on the plan regarding the overhead obstructions, that's on the sheets as well, and, uh, he made a comment about, uh, mulch around the building. That actually, that note was on our cover sheet, but we did add that particular mulch note to the, uh, the plan set as well, not just on the cover. As Carl had mentioned, so we did get some original comments from Town Engineer, uh, those were, those were made, and we did receive additional comments that Carl went through briefly, uh, yesterday. So, we'll be working on those starting probably Monday and, uh, addressing all those comments. Last, uh, I'd like to address, we do have a hearing with Conservation, October twenty-third, which I believe is next Wednesday. Um, I've been talking with Landis and Carl, Town Engineer as well, and we also have a meeting with, uh, Sewer and Water Commission on October twenty-eighth. So, with that, I'd like to answer any questions. Uh, we also have the architect here, if you have any questions regarding the building or any of that stuff too.
I'll just note, Mr. Chair, that, uh, it's actually been appro-, uh, no, it hasn't been approved by Conservation. Okay, I'm sorry. So, it'll go to them, but, uh, the agent and I have discussed this, and I don't think that there'll be any issues with their approval, um, at the next meeting.
Okay. So, the way it's here now, you still got some hoops to jump with other boards and some cleanup to call.
Okay.
I'll open up again there. Paul, do you have any questions, comments?
No, it's, uh, um, in terms of the snow removal plan, you said there was one existing?
So, within the, uh, the site plan itself, we have a area called U and snow storage located in this area. Uh, I believe that might have been new, and this three basic areas should be snow storage.
Is that a plan that we have?
I'm sorry?
Is that a plan that we have?
Yes. It's on sheet four.
Sheet four. Am I blind? Site plan, sheet four.
So, I am blind, so I can't really help. Jack, do you see? What if you see?
You say sheet four.
Yeah, it's my, I think it's U, it doesn't say snow, it says, it's...
A legend of...
U, yeah. It doesn't say snow, it says U.
U, yeah, there it is.
Okay. All right.
Site architecture.
Yeah, all right, that threw me for a loop, okay?
Yeah. We wouldn't have enough room, like, a lot of times like that.
Um, and then we have a lighting plan?
Yeah, very back sheet.
Very back sheet.
Shows how the light is dispersed downward and how it goes. If you follow me, that's right.
Pretty hard to read, but it gives you the momentum for candles.
Okay. This isn't the done plan I've seen. Lack of time, I'm looking.
Which is hard, it's, it's been, look at that poor judge. If I was him, I'd do it.
All right, I guess I have no questions, Your Honor. I knew Bill would like that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't mean...
Yeah, you got to ring.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't think we can do it.
Phil?
First, I, I want to thank you on the revision of the plan you marked for changes of residence. Actually, it's been helpful for us. The only question I have is, um, on the snow, you said sheet four, do you need to have a note, or I have a suggestion, you have a note that says if you exceed the amount of snow storage area that you need to take it off-site? I didn't know if you had that note somewhere that I missed.
We don't have that, but typically, uh, a lot of towns, they need to put the snow storage areas wrong places. And obviously, if you have a bad winter where you're getting feet of snow, we don't want to lose parking, so if there's a position where too much snow, you have to, there's no other place to put it. Uh, so, it's up to the applicant to, he doesn't want, he wants the parking there, so, he doesn't have parking, can't rent rooms, so...
Yeah, I think, I think we often have, see it on plans, you know, it says if, if there's no storage, it's, you know, it's too small, you know, we would do off-site.
Yeah, let me see.
And, and it sounds like you moved the dumpsters, so, you know, wait to see the revised plan.
Just trying to see for sure.
Yeah. John?
Um, the plans were showing only one side of Route One, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, it's kind of confusing because it looks like traffic's coming backwards in and then exiting back. Traffic should be entering from the northeast into the property, and it shows coming in from the southwest. And the traffic, the fire trucks wouldn't be going the wrong way down the street. It's the next map. C four A. Because it is a divided highway at that point, I believe, right? So, the traffic would have been having, coming in right to left, so the first entry point would be coming in from the right side, then taking the loops as it shows, and then exiting to the, at the left-hand side. I don't look like it, I don't think it's an actual issue that you can't do it, it's just...
I'm glad to point out, Fire Park did not notice that? They approved it. They approved it.
But I can, I can tell you that the fire truck that we ran is bigger than the Walpole fire truck, and we can fix it, but it will get around.
It'll get around, I'm sure, just correcting it, uh, yeah. That was the only other thing, I think, that we and I, of course, you'll have to check. I think you said you drew the line right down at the end of the document, and so everything should be set for it, you know?
I thought it was a cheap and full, I think, it's a, pardon me, uh, lot one, a lot A, if you will. You had to get a little bit more front, so I needed to kick it over, you know, let's say ten feet, so there's a little bit of an angle point. Point that, that basically does kind of style it up, uh, you can handle that with the maintenance truck. I believe that our, our particular lot two drainage, pretty much handled on that property, there isn't overflow pipe, and this little area over here that does go there, it was designed that way for, for one, but we can handle...
And potentially, also, there's like, what, one, two, three, four, five parking spots right down in front there, that could be divorcing from the left-hand hotel. I don't know if that would affect your parking calculations or not, or any of those.
It's on the A and I, this side.
Again, if you can handle that with an easement, and especially, it's moved by the same person, I'm not sure that easement are necessary to clean.
I'm not sure, because it's covering the stations now.
Good. This is weird.
Those are my comments.
And my only comment, what we talked about before, the A and I and everything else, you gotta get your stuff together, I don't want anybody getting in the public. I don't have anything else. Uh, Wendy? You'll never get everything by the next meeting, right, Kate? No, it's still gonna go Concom, some on the twenty-eighth, so...
Our next meeting is November seventh, and they would make it because they're going in October for both sewer and water and garbage.
So, you'll have everything together so that you come back on the fifth December?
No, seventh of November.
Seventh December, okay.
November.
No, no, no. They can't make it November seventh because they gotta vote Concom, they gotta get it there, and also water.
We need to come back to the...
Yeah, because you gotta make all these changes, we can't. Let's put it this way, Bill, if we screwed it tonight, and you went to Concom and they moved it one stage...
I understand.
Not again.
Jesse's gonna be there. My niece Jesse.
So, December fifth?
She's so excited.
Given the meeting in November, we're on half the fifth?
Nope.
Half the seventh, right, uh-huh.
It's, uh, November seventh.
On the twenty-first?
November seventh and December fifth.
If we do get comments from Concom, we would have to get those onto the plan, is, submitted, was it two weeks prior?
Yeah, two weeks, yep. See, the thing is, when we, when you walk out of here, there's one plan with everybody's comments on it, so that's what you have to do. But you just don't want to run that risk. If you're Doug Conservation, yeah, that's not bad, but since you're not, you never know what they're gonna want.
Were you able to put it off on the seventh, I...
No, because you won't make it, just because even, right?
Well, I don't, if they make changes, you won't...
It's over.
Yeah, you won't, you won't, there's no fourteen days because it's...
Well, even if they make, make changes, they'd have to go back, and then they'd be propelling you into January. Very simple, done this long enough. Everybody wants to get this one, and guess what? Go the one further, it's all about air, everything's all about air, it goes quicker. Unless you open the hotel on the fourth of December?
Well, I, I was just curious, I mean, if we get no comments back from Concom, I, and I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know.
But it's simpler if you just go that extra because everybody jams it, and if something does happen, now on the twenty-eighth, it's not gonna do, you're gonna go to the seventh, then you're gonna come the seventh, we can't do it because you didn't have the fourteen days for everybody to review, then we're gonna be putting you into December. So, it's just, just the simplest way, it covers all your bases, you guys aren't rushing or whatever. It's not a, I know everybody likes to get going, but I'm gonna start tracking when everybody says I want to go to when they start, because everybody says I'm gonna start tomorrow, and then the grass is grown and the tumbleweeds are there.
I, I just want to avoid presenting behind the apartment building again.
He's honest, I like that.
Oh, I love it.
He was a hundred percent honest, so give him seven minutes, yes. Yes, he's earlier.
What's it worth, uh, all right.
Seven oh five.
No, seven oh one and seven oh two.
Seven oh one sounds great.
Seven oh one, seven oh two, so we'll continue the public hearing seven oh one?
I need the extension.
And we need the extension up through the end of December?
Uh...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we do it that night, and if something happens, but...
December thirty-first.
December thirty-first, okay. Make, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Paul, Paul's favorite?
Aye.
So, seven oh one, seven oh two. Look at the lady that lives on Swan Pond moving up there. She's probably watching, anyway.
It's on YouTube.
Oh.
It's on YouTube, Jack.
Petrosian on that night, is he?
I'm not December fifth, though.
Um, Kate, November seventh meeting, I have, I have to, I'll be out of town.
Motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. To tell adjournment. Nice to meet you.
Paul's favorite?
Aye. He can't, he's on it, so they don't agree. That's all.
Uh...
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we do it that night, and if something happens, but...
Nice second.
December 31st.
December 31st, okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Paul, Paul has favorite?
Aye.
So, 7:01, 7:02. There's a lady that lives on Swan Pond moving up there. She's probably watching, anyway.
It's on YouTube.
Oh, no.
It's on YouTube, Jack.
Petrosian on that night, isn't it?
I'm not December 5th, though.
Keith, November 7th meeting, I have to, I'll be out of town.
Motion for adjournment.
Mr. Jamin?
Yes. To tell Jamin.
I see what you've done.
Paul has favorite?
Aye.
He can't, he's on it, so they don't agree. That's all right.